Folks, if I could have your attention, we'd like to call the Planning Commission for November 27th in order. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman. Before we get started this morning, I'd like to ask or remind you, if you have your cellphone with you, to turn it off or turn it on vibrate, so that it doesn't interfere with the cameras here in the courtroom. And if you would, join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna, this morning, gonna change our agenda around just a little bit. Michael Williams is here with the school board, and he, and as soon as we do the approval of the minutes, I'm gonna let him come forward and present his three-year enrollment and growth comparison numbers. Cause he's got some other conflicts, and that way, he won't have to stay for the full hearing today. So, and he's celebrating, I think, because they got the new plan approved, I guess, by the school board, what, last night? Night before last, whatever? So, okay, good deal. All right, well, with that, let's, commissioners, let's look at our minutes from our September 25th meeting, and see if there's any additions or corrections we need to make to those. And if there is not, we could entertain a motion to approve those. Any changes that need to be made?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a motion to approve? Multiple seconds? Okay, any discussion? Any additions or corrections? Okay, seeing none. We'll just do this by voice vote. All those of favor of approving the minutes as mailed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, the minutes from our September 25th meeting have been approved. All right, and with that, we will call on Ms. Nunn, I guess, to go ahead and read our first docketed item, which is other business, and then we'll get into those growth numbers. Ms. Nunn?
Other business is Oldham County Schools' three-year enrollment and growth comparison. Our first docket today is PZ...
Just the other business.
No, just the other business first?
Okay. All right, with that, Michael, I'll call you up, if you would, and just make a, just tell everybody who you are. I think most everybody knows, but...
I hope so. I don't know. I'm Michael Williams. I am the Director of Pupil Personnel for the Oldham County Board of Education. District address is 6165 West Highway 146 in Crestwood. As you all know, each year, we give you as part of the...
Let me swear you in real quick. We're getting Ms. Nunn to swear you in, if you would.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
As you all know, normally, each year, we give you an update on the growth enrollment projections for the capacity planning ordinance, and also now for the multiplier. Now, I will say upfront, we are not changing the multiplier for this year, since we just adopted it last year. Those numbers seem to be pretty consistent, but I am going to give you the update on the enrollment projections and what we see as the number of students that we get out of each building permit. And so, you should all have the three examples, the three, the five, and the 10. I will go ahead and put the three up there. Amy, you're gonna have to, here we go. So, if you're looking at this one, and really, the important numbers are down at the bottom. When you see enrollment growth, you see that we grew by 93 students from last year to this, the first month of this year. So, that's a .75% growth increase for us. You look at the 271 housing starts, that gets you a number of .343 students per permit that we grew by. All in all, then, we look at the average over the last three years, and you see that, in that very bottom column, that you see that it is .501. When we did the analysis of the projections, we are actually going with the five-year projection based on our numbers for next year. So, I will actually place that one in there, and so that what you can see and what we're going to recommend, that we continue to use with you all, is the new number would be .469. Last year, it was .742. But we are going to recommend, and we will use that .469 when we are calculating the number of students that are coming out of each potential development that would come before you all. And I will be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have. You all have seen this over multiple years, so...
All right, thank you. Let me just open it up here, and if you have any questions for Michael, will, Mr. McWilliams?
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did I hear you say that sometimes you use the three-year projection, and sometimes you use the five-year projection?
Yes, sir.
And would you go, share with me again, the reason that you would deviate from one to the other and not use one?
So, what we do, when we, each year, when we do projections, what we do is we do an analysis of what was the most accurate the year prior. And when you look at all the factors that we look at, the three and the five year were so close. And when I look at for next year, if you look, you see that for next year, based on the five-year projection, it has us growing by 90 students, and that would be this number right here. Okay? And then, looking at the three-year projection, it has us growing by 148 students. Having done this as long as I have done this, I'm sort of hedging my bet that we're not going to grow as fast. Like, that growth is gonna remain constant, cause you look, we only grew by 93 last, this, from last year to this year. 137 the year before. 226 was the big one that we hadn't had in a number of years. So, using knowledge based on experience, we're looking at, we think we're gonna grow by 90. And so, that's why we're using the five-year projection as a district for our planning purposes, and that's the number that we would bring forth to you all.
Now, a follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Based on that incredibly accurate gut of yours...
Yes, sir.
Uh, when do you think we'll be building the next school, and at what level?
My hope is that we get at least four years out of this rebalancing before we even have to start looking at that, which then would still be a two-year process for us. So, in essence, you're looking at potentially six years, is my hope.
And you would guess that would be elementary?
Yes. Middle school, I don't see us needing it at this point. High school, both OC and South would have to get significantly larger to create a comprehensive high school. And the sheer dollar value of what a high school would cost the district to build is almost astronomical. The last one that was built in Kentucky, with Fields and everything, they spent almost $97 million. And the district's not ready to say that's what we're gonna spend yet.
Okay, and, okay, once again, with that accurate gut of yours, you shared middle, I mean, elementary school, would you, would it be too much of a risk for you to say a location, a possible location, the top location, based on those numbers? Or is that going to get in the old emera, and your phone's gonna ring off the hook?
Well, hopefully, it doesn't get in the old emera. At this point, you're looking at potentially Brownsboro, potentially Allen Lane. Beyond that, I don't know. Really, it will determine, what will determine that is where we grow and how much we grow.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any additional questions? Yes, sir.
Michael, how many years did we use the three-year average?
I think we've used it the last four years.
Four years? And that, and the change to the five-year was based on better numbers for the school board, or better numbers for us, or what?
Just, again, looking at, having done this as long as I have done it, and knowing sort of, and watching the trends, and all the numbers that sort of play into this, our birth rate is down, which brings our kindergarten numbers down. So, that's why I feel, and recommended to the board, I felt more confident with the five-year projection, because they were separated, when I did the analysis on them, last year's projections, they were literally separated by tenths, not even a whole percentage point. And overall, last year to this year, the accuracy of the projections was 99.87% accurate. So, I feel like us being able to say, I think that's the better number, sort of holds true.
Okay. And my last question was, the numbers that you projected, on the cap percentages for each school, is that based on the new redistricting?
That is not based on the new redistricting plan. The capacity numbers don't change. Those are numbers that are issued to us by the state. You will see, and I don't think I put the asterisks on there, South High will start to get its renovation starting next summer, because it will turn 30 years old. So, it is due for its first major renovation. At this point, it is slated for an 18 student, or 18 classroom addition, which at 25 students per classroom, it will bring its capacity almost up to 1,500 students.
So, is it possible that you will provide the commissioners an updated capacity and pupil enrollment potential for each school?
Yes, sir. And really, that will come, honestly, that will come next year.
Right.
When, when we actually see, I mean, I have a very, I feel very confident about the numbers, and I can share those, you know, if we want, next month, I can share what I shared with the board, and you can see what we think the numbers will look like for the elementary schools. I'd be more than happy to do that.
I think it's important, I mean, to the commissioners. I mean, I just think we should see those.
Right, and when you look at, and I should've brought it, but when you look at the projections based on the rebalancing, you get every elementary school under 100% capacity.
Anything else, Mr. Douglas? Okay, any, yes, sir.
One more. When the renovation takes place on the south campus...
Yes, sir.
I heard you talk about classrooms, which, okay, not a problem to add classrooms. Problem's commons areas. You take 300 more kids, and you put them in a building, and what does that do to the media center? What does that do to the cafeteria? What does that do to the hallways? Any discussion about that? Any plans for that? Are we just looking still at classrooms?
Well, the state is recommending we build 18, have an 18-classroom addition. And so, you having been the first principal at South Oldham High School, you will know all your green space out front...
Yeah.
Will probably go away.
Yeah.
And so, what's going to happen is that there would be a new, the way I understand it, now, don't quote me on this, that there would be a new band and choir rooms built down toward, the way I understand it, down toward the football field. The current band and choir room would be then converted into additional cafeteria space. There is no widening of the hallways, at least in the upstairs, you know, in the current hallways. There's no widening, widening of those hallways. The office would be moved all the way out front toward the end of the, toward the parking lots. They would become an airlock building, which means that you have to be buzzed into the office before you can get anywhere else in the building. So, that would also add, there would be additional, you know, common area space added in all of that. I am assuming that there would be in addition to the library. I don't know. I haven't seen the plans. That's not...
Tell them to go to the courtyard, which is not being utilized for anything.
I'm assuming that they will eventually get rid of the courtyard. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it.
All right. Anything else? No, sir. Okay. All right. Any additional questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Combs, I would assume that we just need a motion to approve the updated numbers from the school system?
That's good.
Okay. All right, commissioners, you heard the, what's being requested. We just need a motion to approve Mr. Williams's updated school capacity numbers, and... So moved, Mr. Chairman. Okay, got a motion to approve those. Have a second. Mr. Mesker, is there any discussion on the motion to approve the updated school capacity numbers? Any discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this, if we couldn't, Ms. Nunn. So, we'll go ahead and do the vote. This is a motion to approve the updated numbers that have been presented here this morning.
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Faubie?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Hapling?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Good luck on your audit.
Thanks. Day two.
All right, the motion to approve the updated school capacity numbers from Mr. Michael Williams has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. Michael, thank you very much for bringing those forward, and, and like I say, I know you're, with the holiday coming up, you're glad to have that, this behind you. So, thank you very much, sir. All right, with that, I'll call on Ms. Nunn now. We'll move into our first docketed item that we have today, and I'll get her to read the docket, if you would, please.
Okay. First docket, PZ-18-024. Application has been filed by Mason Construction and Development LLC for the approval of the development plan, mini-storage with variances, section 200-040, setbacks and waivers, section 300-050, landscape buffer areas, section 280-080, parking requirements, and approximately three acres. The property is located in the corner of Highway 146 and Cedar Point Road in Buckner. The zoning is I-2 Heavy Industrial District.
All right, thank you. And before we get started with the introduction by Ms. Beeman, I'd like to get staff sworn in. Ms. Nunn?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Ms. Beeman will introduce the docket for us.
Sure. Good morning. Brooke Beeman, Senior Planner with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Nunn stated, this request is for a development plan with two waivers and a total of five variances. In your staff report, there was, there were four that were listed, four variances that were listed. I did find that there was one more that was necessary, and I'll go over that in the staff report this morning. The address is at the northwest corner of Cedar Point Road and Highway 146. The property is vacant. The zoning is I-2 Heavy Industrial, and the lot size is 2.98 acres. This is the vicinity map. You can see that the lot in question is highlighted in red at the corner of Cedar Point Road and Highway 146. This is the current zoning of the vicinity. The property, as stated, is zoned I-2 Heavy Industrial. It has R2 to the north, I-2 to the south, CO1 and R2 to the east, and R4A to the west. You can see that the Cedar Point Villas is the development that directly borders this site. So, I'll give you some tract history. In April 2005, there were two dockets that were approved for 9.5, 4.5 acres to be rezoned from I-2 to R4, R4A, for the development of Cedar Point condominiums. As a part of this development, this, the 9.45 acres was developed to be condos, and then the, this tract, which is in question today, was to remain I-2. So, it was originally a part of the Cedar Point Villas tract, but they marked on the development plan that it would remain I-2 for future development. And then, in February 2008, a minor plat was approved to divide, to officially divide the 2.98 acres from the parent tract. So, that's how this tract was created. This is the, this is Division 200, I-2 Heavy Industrial District, which comes from the zoning ordinance. The intent of I-2 Heavy Industrial District is to provide for industrial use, is not allowed in any other district, providing that such uses are not obnoxious or offensive by reason of the excessive emission of odor, dust, smoke, noise, gas fumes, cinders, vibrations, refuse matter, or water, carried waste, and that such characteristics are not normally discernible beyond its property. The use proposed here is self-storage facility, and that is considered a light industrial use, and that is a permitted use in I-2 Heavy Industrial District. The applicant is proposing a 301-unit indoor, indoor, indoor self-storage facility, which generates less than 20 peak hour trips, making it a Category 1 development, according to our site plan review procedure. Category 1 developments usually do not come before the Planning Commission. They're usually done at staff review. So, something that's zoned correctly, that has, that is a permitted use, that does not generate more than peak hour trips, is usually just done through site plan review. This case is before you today, because they are asking for waivers and variances with their development plan. This is the development plan that was submitted. I highlighted on here the proposed buildings. So, you can see, there's a large conditioned space facility that will have 157 units. There's a proposed office, a proposed maintenance building, and then, there's three buildings here that are proposed self-storage facilities with your typical garage door openings. The applicant is requesting two waivers, the first of which is a perimeter landscape buffer area. They're asking that the width be decreased from the required 50 feet to the proposed 25 feet, which would require a 20, 25-foot waiver. The plantings that are required, according to our landscape regulations, will still be installed. Those plantings are seven-foot-high continuous screen and one tree every linear feet. The applicant is also requesting a parking waiver. The requirement, according to our zoning ordinance, is one space every 10 storage units plus one space per employee. So, the required number of spaces is 30, and they are proposing 11 designated spaces. This is, highlighted in yellow, is the places that the applicant has designated as parking. So, you can't really see the difference in yellow on here, but the designated spaces that are listed come out to 11. There are drive aisles that access the buildings, and those can be used for parking and unloading as well, but we did not count, count those towards the calculated designated parking spaces. Highlighted in green is the location of the requested 20, the requested 25-foot landscape buffer area waiver. Again, the zoning ordinance requires that industrial next to residential is required to have a 50-foot landscape buffer area, but the applicant is requesting that the Planning Commission approve a waiver to allow them to decrease that area to 25 feet. So, we'll cover the variances. There are two front yard setback variances. The front yard setback requirement in I-2 is 100 feet. This tract has two front yards, because it has frontage on Cedar Point Road and on Highway 146. And then, there's another front yard setback requirement for parking. The, and this was not listed in your staff report, but the parking requirement for I-2 is that the parking area must be at least 35 feet setback from the property line, and the parking area proposed is only 21 feet setback from the property line. So, that's an additional variance that they'll need. They also need two side yard setback variances. When I-2 abuts residential district, there's a 75-foot setback. So, abutting the Cedar Point Villa development, the applicant is proposing, at its closest point, a building to be 25 feet from the property line. And then, abutting the Greer property, which is also a residential tract, there's a 75-foot setback requirement, and so, they're requesting a 25-foot setback variance. So, this is the development plan, and I've highlighted it, highlighted in red the locations where setback requests are located. So, this is the entrance off of Cedar Point Road, which requires a 100-foot setback, because it's technically considered a front. They are proposing a 25-foot, a 20-foot setback, and as you can see, the parking area is right along that 20, 20-foot setback. I've measured it to come to about 21 feet from the property line, and again, they are required to have a 30-foot, 35-foot setback for parking, according to I-2 standards. They have another front on Highway 146, so there's a 100-foot setback required there. They're proposing 20 feet. There's a 75-foot setback abutting R4, which, and the applicant is requesting a 25-foot setback. And this section, this tract is zoned R2, so the setback on this side is required to be 75 feet. They're proposing 50 feet. Okay, the applicant's justification is that the tract is only 175 feet deep, which makes the development of this site without a setback variance impossible. The lot was created and zoning classification applied to it before purchased by the applicant. The variances will not harm the public safety and welfare, because there will still be a significant difference, distance between buildings. Despite the decrease in landscape buffer area size, the applicant intends to provide significant screening and buffering to mitigate any negative effects that the development may have on adjoining properties. And the land use does not generate the need for 30 designated parking spaces. The site is designed so that visitors can temporarily park in front of their, in front of their storage unit. This is the south view, looking south on Highway 146. I'm standing at the center of the property, and this is Cedar Point Road. Just another view looking south. This is the adjoining property to the south, which is the treehouse development, and that is starred on the aerial map to give you an idea of orientation. This is the east view, looking across the street, at the vacant piece of property that is starred on the aerial map to your right. This is looking north. If you're standing on the tract, looking north towards Buckner Elementary and Oldham County Middle School. And this is just another view looking north. This is generally the west view, so these houses back here are along Eastbrook Drive, a part of the Cedar Point Villa development. And just another view This is a view from Eastbrook Drive, so parked right about this location, looking into the site from Eastbrook Drive. And another view from Eastbrook Drive. In summary, the applicant is requesting approval of two waivers, the first being landscape buffer area requirements and parking requirements, and five variances, three of, three of which, two of which are for front yard setbacks, one of which is for a front yard setback for parking, and then, two of which are for side yard setbacks. And that's all that I have.
All right. Before we get into questions from the commissioners, Mr. Harris, do you have anything that you would like to add to the presentation? Nope, okay. All right, commissioners, any questions for staff? Ms. Davis?
I have one question.
Is your mic on?
I'm sorry.
Is your mic on?
Yes, sir. Which one of these buildings, can you point it out, which building will be the one that'll house the 15,095 square feet for the contractor storage?
Oh, that's not the same, that's not this request.
Is that part of that?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
That's the Crestwood property.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, any additional questions for staff?
Kevin.
Oh, sorry.
Brooke, when you were...
Brooke, when you were looking at this and out taking pictures, and you may have given this, but I didn't catch exactly where you were, did you have a picture or a view from within the subdivision out to where the...
So this is the, so Eastbrook Drive is here, inside of the Cedar Point Villas. I'm standing at the entrance of these two houses, looking into the development.
You're looking between the houses?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Douglas?
This will be for Mr. Harris.
Okay.
Sir, is there any way they could turn the sound up?
We'll try, and we also have some headphones if we, are they available? We can get you a headphone, and that helps to make it a little bit easier to hear them. Sometimes the microphone doesn't pick up real well here in the front. Mr. Harris, I just name an address for the record.
Scott Harris, 100 West Jefferson Street, La Grange.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Harris, have you had a chance to review the developmental plan yet?
Yes, the conceptual plan, yes.
And I know that probably developers had not submitted a stormwater plan yet.
No.
Based on the developmental plan that you've seen, obvious...
Is that me?
Sorry.
Obviously, there's a lot of impervious surface that's going to be placed here, and with, I guess, the contour of the property, was there any consideration or concern? I see there was one proposed detention basin area being proposed with proposed stormwater detention, I guess, facilities going through the property, but also, I guess, it shows it would be exiting out onto existing stormwater into the development. That's...
They don't show where that detention basin directly drains. It appears to drain to an existing basin within the residential subdivision to the west of the property, but this is a conceptual plan. There's no sizings, there's no rates, there's no flows.
So based on this, you're not able to answer any questions, Seth?
Well, we had preliminary meetings, the planning department and the engineering department, with the applicant, and discussed several issues that they didn't choose, they chose not to present today, but there are a lot of ways that this could be handled. The only real drainage problem that I see that could happen is the waiver they're requesting for the landscape buffer on the west is also a drainage swale. So if there's any amount of plants that have to go in there, it's a 100-foot buffer, and they're only going to do 25, well, you can't have them in the ditch. The stormwater's got to run. So that might be an issue, but I don't know how many plants will be required to be there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I'm not sure who can answer this, but the surface area of this proposal, ingress and egress, and the areas that are actually in front of the storage facilities, is that going to be blacktop? It's probably on here.
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, applicant, get ready. Brooke, what's, would you throw up again that slide you had that showed all of the potential uses of I-2? I couldn't see it.
Let me get my...
She's getting that, it has been pointed out that the surface is listed on the plan.
I knew it, I just can't see it. So we know what it is. What is it?
I'm sorry?
It's, yeah, it's paved.
It's hard paved.
And they meet the impervious surface requirement. They're not over on impervious surface.
Okay, so all of that paved, okay.
All right, any additional questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now move into presentation by the applicant, or representative, and others in support of the application. And you have 50 minutes, sir.
Did you not want to look at the use, I think Mr. McWilliams was wanting to look at the uses for I-2?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm sort of used to being treated like the second dog.
Sorry about that. We'll let her add that for you.
So on this side is the permitted uses, and then on the right side is the conditional. You have all your typical ag and commercial, in addition to heavy industrial and light industrial.
For me, I don't have any else. All right, any additional questions for staff? All right. Now we'll move into the presentation by the applicant and others in support of, and we'll get you sworn in, Mr. Simpson, and we'll, or you don't want to get sworn in, but whoever's going to speak, sworn in if we could.
Do you tell me to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right, and we'll just get your name and addresses as you come forward.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ray Roland. I'm an attorney representing the applicant. My address is 6506 West Highway 22, Crestwood, Kentucky. That's my office address. And I'm not going to repeat all that you've just heard, although I do think it is important. As Mr. McWilliams, you wanted to see the uses in the I-2 industrial district, I'm just going to mention a few of them, and these are without conditional uses, and include vehicle repair, veterinary hospital and kennels, eating establishments, fast food restaurants of any kind, canneries, and other agricultural processing, auto parts, metal, glass, paper, recycling plants, box factory, lumber storage, millwork, and sales. There's others, but those are some that are compatible with the I-2 zoning, and then going with conditional uses that even includes such things as asphalt processing and slaughterhouses. These are all I-2 zoning uses that can be approved. And when my client, Mason Construction, was considering this property, he was looking at the uses that could be put to this property, knowing that he would have to come before the commission regardless of what it was, and the storage facility seemed to be compatible both with the I-2 zoning as well as the adjoining residential properties. And of course, right across the street, we have the major distribution center in the county, and across the highway, we have the railroad track. So this intersection is always going to be a T. I handed out a typewritten justification statement. My wife and I just got back from visiting family in Colorado, and this morning I looked at it, and I want to tell you I'm directionally challenged. I was thinking of this as the northeast corner of the intersection of Cedar Point Road and 146. It's actually the northwest corner. Mike knows better than I because I looked, and he did have the northwest corner, so I apologize for that. I think I proofread everything but the heading, and any should be "and," so I wanted to make those two corrections for you. Dan Perkins is a builder and developer in Oldham County, longtime resident of the county. And Mike Hill is a senior land planner at Land Design and Development. I think all of you are familiar with him. Probably Mike is going to be presenting the details. You don't need to hear those from me. You need to hear those from someone who is an expert in this area and can answer your questions better than I. These variances are needed, as stated in the justification statement, for and would be needed by just about anything you tried to put on this property. And in 2005 and 2008, when it was divided, maybe it's unfortunate that it was done the way that it was, but my client had absolutely nothing to do with that, and is proposing now this very compatible use of the property for this corner. So we had a neighborhood meeting in regard to this, and it was a good meeting. As a result of the meeting, some changes to the design of the buildings were made. You saw the homes, the nice homes that are adjoining this property, and Dan can speak to that, but the design of the buildings is going to be first class. The landscaping will be first class, and as stated, the variances and the waivers are just absolute necessities in order to use this property as a mini warehouse storage site. With that said, I'll introduce Mike Hill, who'll be giving you more of the details, and will have a screen presentation for you.
Mike Hill, Land Design and Development, 503 Washburn Avenue, Louisville, 40222. Thank you, commissioners. I plan to just go through a handful of slides here that talk about the site plan in a little more detail, and I've got some building elevation slides and some landscape exhibit slides to show you today. Brooke mentioned the zoning of the property, so I won't talk about it, other than the fact that we're heavy industrially zoned, adjacent to heavy industrial as well as residential. This is aerial photo of the vicinity with our colored site plan dropped into it, so you can see how what we're proposing fits in with the surrounding properties on all sides. We can come back to that if needed during the course of today's discussion. This is our site plan. As mentioned, we have one access point on Cedar Point Road in this location. We have had preliminary discussions with Kentucky Transportation Cabinet representatives about that entrance. They are not allowing us to have any entrance onto Highway 146. Cedar Point Road is also a state road, which is why they were involved in the discussions about the access on Cedar Point Road. They conceptually agree with our proposed location in that location. They wanted the access point as far back from the intersection as possible, so that's where the access point has been designed. As mentioned, all of the vehicular area within the site will be paved within the property, and there will be no gravel. The site was designed to flow kind of in a loop pattern. You can pull in off Cedar Point. There will be a fence and a gate in approximately this location here. And then once you enter into the storage vicinity, storage portion of the site, you can travel either side of that central building to get to your unit. There will be six parking spaces in the rear, near the two-story climate-controlled storage building in the rear. There will also be ample space along the other three buildings to temporarily park in front of your unit to load and unload. And I didn't mention, but there's also five parking spaces near the front of the site, which is adjacent to our office. Detention and drainage was mentioned by Mr. Harris. We did have preliminary meeting and discussions with his office. It was decided at those meetings that we would work with his office during construction plan phase of the project, if approved, to determine the exact details of how the detention and drainage situation will be handled. What we propose would be kind of an either-or situation. One will be that we'll provide an onsite detention basin on the right side of the plan, behind that building, that will capture all of our stormwater runoff through a system of catch basins and pipes through the paved parking lot and through a swale along the rear property line that will direct all of our runoff to that detention basin, which will then be outlet to an existing detention easement and system within the adjacent subdivision, which is routed toward their detention basin. So the details of that, as mentioned, will be figured out during construction, when we've done more engineering, more analysis, to figure out exact details of how that system will work, and of course, it'll have to comply with county regulations and Mr. Harris's office regarding drainage. The landscaping that you see on the site plan here is conceptual, but it is what we feel will be presented at the time of landscape plan submittal, review, and approval, which coincides with the construction plan review. We have complied, even with landscape buffer requirement, waivers that we're requesting, we're still providing...
Michael, if you would, speak up just a little bit. They're having a little trouble hearing you in the back of the room here.
Sure. Even with the landscape waivers that we're requesting, as far as the buffer widths, we're still providing all of the required landscaping that's required by the zoning ordinance. The area in the back, adjacent to the residential subdivision, will actually be significantly increasing the amount of landscaping required there, approximately double the minimum requirement along that property line, we'll still be providing, even though the buffer is not 50 feet, still 25 feet will be enough to provide the adequate landscaping to screen the buildings from visual screening, any noise screening, which shouldn't be much from this type of use. Next few slides are the building elevations, which you have those in your packets, I believe. These are building elevations provided by our architect. Buildings will be constructed of a mixture of materials, a brick veneer product and a siding product, similar to hardy plank-type siding. So this is a view of the office area from Cedar Point Road. You can see the fence there that I mentioned. This is a view from 146. And again, I've got another set of slides that show the landscaping that'll be in place in front of these buildings in a second. This is an aerial view from 146, that's kind of an overview of the entire site, and then aerial view from Cedar Point Road. Now, these slides took those building elevations, and we kind of improved upon them a bit by showing the landscaping. So this is what we envision the front of the site, from the intersection of Cedar Point and 146, being landscaped in front of all the buildings surrounding all sides. This is another angle, a little further down 146. This is a view, kind of an overhead view, of what the residents from the adjacent Cedar Point subdivision would see. Our buildings kind of make a wall, in essence, that would satisfy the screening requirement of the zoning ordinance, but we also plan more than double, or approximately double the zoning ordinance required landscaping along that property line to help soften the look of the buildings from the view of the adjacent residents. of the adjacent residents. This is another angle of that same rear property line. So, you can see our dark property line there, we've, we've got 25 feet to work with, with, for landscaping, before you get to the, the back edge of our, of our buildings. And then, I created this exhibit because I wanted to show how much buildable space is available on this lot, without requesting any setback, building setback variance or landscape buffer waiver. So, the hatched area, which basically encompasses the entire site, with the exception of one little area on the right side of the plan, is consumed by those required setbacks or landscape buffer areas. As mentioned earlier, this, this site is only 175 feet deep, and there is a 100-foot setback requirement along 146, and then, a 75-foot setback requirement along the rear property line, which consumes the entire property. So, just wanted to create an illustration that kind of shows why we are requesting the variances and waivers that we are. In order to develop this property in any manner, we think that some mixture of variances and landscape waivers is, is going to be necessary. And that, that's it at this point. I'd be happy to answer any site plan-related questions, if anyone has any.
We'll get to the questions here in just a little bit. Ray, is there any other part of your presentation you need to make?
We're at 6244 Old Lagrange Road, Crestwood. So, we, I just want to say that we started this process with, with planning and zoning. Regarding the front entrance on 146, they wanted to close that entrance, stop planning zoning with the state, so we moved that around the side.
You speak up just a little bit. Or, excuse me, over the mic.
So, we moved the, the entrance around the side to Cedar Point Road, to limit the access off 146. Would be no, no access off 146. We also had a meeting with the homeowners that are adjacent to the property, and we changed some of the building materials to be compatible to their, to their own homes, which is a hardy paint plank product, which would be on the backside of the buildings, even on 146, and up against the neighborhood. And also, a brick, a brick skirt along the buildings, just to dress them up. So, we've kind of been working with everybody along the way to get this, to get this development on board approved, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Ray, anything else, sir?
No, Mr. ...
Hold on, get you to come back up, so I can get you down the record, please.
No. Of course, we're happy to answer questions at the proper time. Thank you.
All right. I'll tell you what, before we, we're going to take a little bit of, about a 10-minute recess here, before we get into the testimony and questions of those opposing the application. But what I'd like to ask is that everyone here, you know, don't talk to the commissioners until the hearing is over with. But before we take a break here, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of this application? Is there anyone that would like to speak in support of? Okay. Seeing none, we will take a 10-minute recess, try to be back here just a little after 10 o'clock, and we'll complete the application at that point.